Okay, we're gonna call the meeting to order and start with the pledge of allegiance. Can I have a motion for approval of the president's agenda? Questions or comments? All in favor? Okay, we're gonna start out tonight's meeting with a public comment period. This is an opportunity for members of the public to speak about issues related to Chatham Central School District. We will give each individual a few minutes and the... I think, I think all of our public's been here and commented before. Do we, do we have any online hands? Okay, so if there's anyone online that would like to speak in public comment, go ahead and raise your digital hand. When we finish with the people in the room, we'll, we'll look for you. There will be a second public comment period at the conclusion of the meeting. And that's the beginning of that. We have two or three there? And if anyone else in the room would like to speak, just make sure you put your name on this sign-in there on the table to get him in line.
Okay, we'll start with Xena Sanchez.
Hello, everyone. Happy New Year. So I want to read a statement. A statement that was made by Dr. Robert Malone. It was published in The Defender. And I just thought it's important that everyone hears it. Okay. Before you vaccinate your child, which is irreversible and potentially permanently damaging, find out why 16,000 physicians and medical scientists around the world signed a declaration publicly declaring that healthy children should not be vaccinated for COVID-19. On behalf of these M.D.s and P.H.D.s, I've published a clear statement outlining the scientific facts behind this decision. My name is Robert Malone and I am speaking to you as a parent, grandparent, physician, and scientist. I don't usually read from a prepared speech, but this is so important that I want to make sure that I get every single word and scientific fact correct. I stand by this statement with a career dedicated to vaccine research and development. I'm vaccinated for COVID and I'm generally pro-vaccination. I have devoted my entire career to developing safe and effective ways to prevent and treat infectious diseases. Before you inject your child, a decision that's irreversible, I want to let you know the scientific facts about this genetic vaccine, which is based on the mRNA vaccine technology I created. There are three issues parents need to understand. The first is that a viral gene will be injected into your child's cells. This gene forces your child's body to make toxic spike proteins. These proteins often cause permanent damage in children's critical organs, including their brain and nervous system, their heart and blood vessels, including blood clots, their reproductive system. This vaccine can trigger, trigger fundamental changes to their immune system. The most alarming point about this is that once these damages have occurred, they are irreparable. You can't fix the lesions within their brain. You can't repair heart tissue scarring. You can't repair a genetically reset immune system. This vaccine can cause reproductive damage that could affect future generations of your family. The second thing you need to know about is the fact that this novel technology has not been adequately tested. We need at least five years of testing research before we can really understand the risks. Harms and risks from new medicines often become revealed many years later. Ask yourself if you want your own child to be part of the most radical medical experiment in human history. One final point. The reason they're giving you to vaccinate your child is a lie. Your child represents no danger to their parents or grandparents. It's actually the opposite. Their immunity after getting COVID is critical to save your family, if not the world, from this disease. In summary, there is no benefit for your children or your family to be vaccinating your children against the small risks of the virus, given the known health risks of the vaccine that, as a parent, you and your child may have to live with for the rest of their lives. The risk-benefit analysis isn't even close. As a parent and grandparent, my recommendation to you is to resist and fight to protect your children. And then, one quick last thing, really quick. This is a quote from Robert F. Kennedy Jr., which I thought is very fitting. Never in human history have old people required young people to take risks, make sacrifice, and die to preserve older people. We have a fiduciary duty to our children. Old people sacrifice themselves for children in a moral society, in a robust society, in a society that we are proud of. We do not tell children to take risks to preserve old people. We need to stand up and take a moral choice and ethical choice for our children.
Thank you, Xena. Who's up next? And I'm sorry, I missed how many we have on the list.
I'm sure that two weeks ago was probably pretty nice for you guys without us here, right? So, this is how we understand it. We are frustrated and angry, not only because you took away opportunities from our students by discriminating against them based on their medical choices, but we are also frustrated because your silence on a daily and weekly basis comes across as conceited and arrogant. But maybe that is what you want, because you haven't done anything to change that perception. Almost all of you share a community with us, yet at no point have you shared your reasons for your decisions. Only a few of you have even had a conversation about it with any of us. For 14 weeks, we have heard barely anything from you, except scattered excuses and empty promises of when you will get back to us. You being either afraid or too conceited to have discussions about the safety and efficiency of a medical product, your mask mandates, and quarantine policies does nothing to promote trust in your decisions. Is that what you want from all of this? Did all of you, as leaders of our district, not have the capability to foresee how this would go? Do you want us to continue to think you are heartless when it comes to our children? That is the perception, and your lack of communication and action is reinforcing it. You are listening to the Department of Health and the media, who is funded by criminal pharmaceutical drug companies, while we are listening to doctors who are risking their careers to bring forth suppressed information. You claim you are enforcing our kids to get the shots and that they have a choice. But a choice is kind of along the lines of, would you like coffee or tea? Not, would you like to be a part of a medical experiment to be able to play basketball or volleyball? That's actually called blackmail. I'm not a paid scientist, so this is tough for me to understand, but I will say this. Wearing a mask for seven hours a day for two years is unhealthier than having the flu for one week straight. You fell for the vaccines are 100% effective against infection. But now you're okay with, well, they were only meant to reduce the symptoms. But get it, or you can't play. The vaccinated are now the more infected, both here in Chatham and nationwide. For example, the NBA, NFL, NHL, as well as cruise ships and apparently colleges, all have vaccination rates above 95%, yet they are all facing their highest infection rates over the last two years. And what's the common denominator here? Oh yeah, it's the shot. That's what you stand behind when you discriminate against our children. You are giving the vaccinated privileges that unvaccinated don't receive when both can get and spread the virus. So if you look at it objectively, you and your decisions are actually about compliance and have nothing to do with health. You are forcing children to receive a product made by criminal companies who aren't liable for injuries or death, and the product doesn't even stop transmission because trust the science. But here's the problem with the science you are following. Science that can't be questioned or explained. It's actually just propaganda. Nothing says trust the science more than a company that developed these injections asking to keep their data hidden for 75 years. That is the side you have chosen to be on. The perception you force upon us. The virus is so strong that uninjected students can't participate. The virus is so strong that it can get past three shots that you mandate and encourage, but it can't get past these Paw Patrol masks. That's the hill you are willing to die on. Really? Your precious Department of Health and the CDC just admitted the masks don't work, while they are simultaneously telling unvaccined to get vaxxed because it works so well, while telling the best to take more because it doesn't work. But seeing you have hung your hat on trusting the science, why have you suddenly stopped? Because now the CDC says only five days of quarantine, but our school decides to not trust the science from the CDC. This makes me wonder, if we are no longer trusting the CDC science, then why not? When are you, as a school board, actually going to make your own decisions for our students? Why do you blindly follow the Department of Health? Shouldn't you be challenging them on this? If you truly believed in the science this whole time, like you claimed in October, you would be pushing the Department of Health at all levels to continue to follow it. It's a new year. This year, you should try standing up for all of our students and make that your New Year's resolution. You're like many Fauches. You never really answer us. You're unwilling to debate your propaganda and will not accept any challenges to your blind decisions that negatively impact our students and children. Your silence in this regard says a lot about you and your leadership, and ultimately, what kind of people you are. Although I doubt your Department of Health has shared this with you, but there is no shortage of data to show that adverse childhood experiences have lasting physical and mental health consequences, much longer than a couple days of a virus. Here's a fact. Young people are in very little danger from the virus, but they are the ones most at risk from suicide, overdose, and mental health. Domestic abuse. It is our job, it is your job to protect our students from that. It is your responsibility to make things normal for our students again, and as quickly as possible. Instead, on a weekly basis, we have more and more students on right from anxiety to depression through your discriminatory mandates and rules. Here's my final thought. They lied about the efficiency of masks, the shots, natural immunity, the boosters, the mandates, because science, I mean propaganda. They fired unvaccinated healthcare workers, but now we're allowing vaccinated but sick healthcare workers to work. That has to be the most illogical thing since Bell reform. The lies from the monsters in charge won't stop anytime soon. So as leaders of our district, when will you stop listening to them? Regurgitating them and stand up for our kids and do something about it. If you still believe in what they are selling you at this point, you have basic flaws in your ability to analyze simple data, either due to psychological blockage or intellectual ability. You have forced the vaccines and masks on our children, but the reality is, if either one of them worked, you wouldn't need the other. So your forceful guidance in our district is actually an admission that one or both don't work. My point being, the medicine and the mandates you have tried to force upon our kids is ineffective. But not admitting you are wrong and reversing your decisions, it looks as though you are protecting COVID and the mandates more than you are protecting our children. Is that the perception you're promoting in Chatham? I think it's time to stop climbing the compliance ladder and unmask our students and let them play.
Thank you, Spanish. Before we go to the next one, any hands? Okay. Okay, thank you. Thank you. Just make that note. I'm sorry, who were the other two? Thank you, everyone. Okay, so, no hands. We're gonna move, and there will be another public comment, but we're gonna move on to our technology update. Oh, board comment, I'm sorry. Everything's slow here in the web, clicking around. Well... You know what, a lot's been happening here in the, in the last few weeks in the world, but here in Chatham. Does anyone on the board want to share anything about immunity these past couple weeks? Okay. I know, um... You know, I was encouraged we were able to distribute those, those tests today. I'm hoping that, um... You know, that a lot of people have been struggling to, uh... A lot of people, huh? Oh, a lot of people have really been struggling, struggling to get a hold of tests. I know that you go to stores and they're not available, or you call and they're, they're available, you show up, they're not available. So I think, you know, the fact that our parents have access to these for symptomatic students, if they're a little sniffling, I think that's, that's really great. I don't have anything else to add there, so... Yes, that was today. That was today, that's what I'm talking about. So that was, uh, I don't know our numbers, but we certainly, we were nonstop there for a couple hours, right?
We were at 442.
Yeah, so that's, that's, that's pretty good. And, and so, um, there is some remaining quantity there for anyone that didn't make it, right? They can contact their, their school building?
Yes, we have quite a few people that contacted us over the last day or so, indicating that they would, would not be able to make it. And over the next couple days, we're setting tests aside and they can pick it up at their convenience at their school.
Great. Okay, so, now we'll move into the technology update.
Okay, so I just wanted to introduce Brian Kuhn. He is an IT project manager with Questar, and he is helping us organize our team and do some baseline metrics of where we're at and making some recommendations. And he's gonna give you just a first blush of where we're at and what we're working on.
Good evening, everyone. Thanks for the introduction. What was it about? Early October, I believe, is when I started doing some work with, with Chatham Schools. And, you know, part of initially coming in here was trying to work, or spending some time with Giles. And taking someone like Giles, that has been here for, I think, around 15 years, and his innate knowledge of everything that happens is, you know, how do you get some of that knowledge out of him and into, you know, a way where we can digest it? Start to learn and understand a little bit about Chatham, where we, where we stood. Got to know a lot of the members on the team here, tech team that we have right now. It's, you know, some great individuals, Trish here and Harris. So, you know, the initial, initial first month or so is a lot of fact-finding, a lot of understanding the technologies that we have, working with the administration, understanding where some of our pain points are, some of our processes, where are we with, you know, certain projects that may or may not, you know, be moving forward. So, once we got, you know, get, get past, you know, the initial phases here, and understanding that, you started, start to little understand of how, how can we go forward a little bit better? How can we organize in a way to, to help make everything run efficiently? At the beginning of the school year, we implemented, well, the tech team implemented a new ticketing system, Help Desk ticketing system. And the main goal was to make it as, you know, easy, painless as possible for staff to log tickets with the Help Desk and get their issues addressed in a, you know, in a timely manner. The ability to track, uh, their tickets. And, and one of the nice things about it, it's a simple way of emailing helpdesk@chatham.k12@ny.us, create the ticket, they get a email back in the system that says their ticket has been created. Along the way, when, when the ticket's, you know, being updated, a note will pop through in their email saying, you know, if it's been assigned or progress has happened, or if the, you know, the tech who's working the ticket has to reach out to them and ask for additional information or schedule a time to work on that. As the ticketing system, as we're starting to get a little bit more used to it and using it as a team, there's a lot of functionalities on it that we're starting to unlock. There's the ability to categorize our tickets that are there, what, what, what's the nature of the problem? And as of this date, we've got up to 1,500 tickets in the system, so we can start to gather data about where our volume of tickets are in the school and staff, you know, and see some of the reoccurring issues, see some of the issues that, you know... A lot of them are, to say, ink issues, you know, printers running out of ink. It doesn't matter what the, the ticket issue is, but it's nice to not be able to see the data, look at that data, and now we can start to make some, you know, decisions as we're seeing that data come in and how, how can we better tailor the Help Desk and our technology to, to actually meet the needs that we're seeing, that are presented to us, you know, from the staff. The, um, as we continue to move along with that, we'll make further recommendations on how to, you know, how to move forward. One of the other big areas that we saw was the, we've got a lot of projects currently going on, but there's really no way of tracking the projects, really understanding where we even were with projects. Get, you know, using some of the tools we already had available, the teams together, we put together a project board, gathered, going through all the notes that we have of all the projects we have going on, and put them in a nice way to digest, to be able to see, visualize, and track the progress. Some of the projects, or actually, and also to note that this project board we have is a collaborative project board, where we also have administration that has access to this board, so they can also see the updates that are going on, can comment or see, you know, potential, any issues or roadblocks that might come down the road and, you know, allows us to work a little bit better as a team to see that. So a lot of what we're trying to do is, how do we work together, work together as a team? And how do we, you know, communicate? So a lot of these initiatives so far have been to try to address some of those, those issues that, you know, I've seen since being here. Some of the projects, a couple, I wanted to hit a couple of the important ones that are going on. One of the big important ones going on has to do with, currently, right now, a lot of it ties around to wiring that's happening in the building, as we are looking at running wiring that for both security cameras, wireless access points, and our, we have an aging, um... There is an aging, you know, PA system here, announcement system, and looking at putting in, you know, IP-based cameras and, sorry, IP-based clocks called InformaCast, a single-wire InformaCast. I have used this product over at Questar. We have it in several of our buildings. It also integrates with the Cisco Phone System. And together, when you combine the two, you can do announcements where they either go through the phone to go through the clock. There's a lockdown drill or lockdown that's happening at the school. There's a lot of information that can be, that can be displayed on the clocks and combined with the phones that can be broadcast throughout the school. So, proper wiring in place, along with, especially the wireless access points. We've seen that a lot of the wireless access points right now, even though they might be mounted, either they may be mounted on the wall, maybe not mounted on the ceiling, but their wiring is currently running off of wall jacks that are on the, you know, that are put down low. We've had tickets where we've seen an access point by accident, we got unplugged by whoever, we don't know who, you know, how it got unplugged. But we've seen some of those where it'll disrupt a classroom. So our goal is to rewire all of the wireless access points so that they are mounted on ceilings and there's nobody has access to those, those jacks to help, you know, one, help secure the, the network, and two, it prevents any obstruction to the, to the devices. Our, the current access points are, they're older, older technology, they still work. They're from 2014, and we have used E-Rate funds to purchase new Aruba wireless access points. They have, you know, a lot of new, great features that are, that are going to be available for us. There is, they are Wi-Fi 6 capable, and they have a better way of dealing with efficiency when it comes to amount of density of kids in a classroom. So it, it works multi-users a little bit better, along with it keeps track of when students go from one room to another to be able to allow them to seamlessly move. They see issues now, right now, where teachers or students, when they go from one room to another, they may drop and then pick back up, and it may take a little bit of time. So it tries to keep the efficiency going on the wireless network. So, I could go on and on about the benefits of the new wireless access points. So to say, 2014, it was iPhone 6 that was out. Just think about with the iPhone that's out now and all the new technologies compared to then and now. So this was one of our big purchases with our E-Rate funds, and that will be a project that we're, we're doing, continuously we'll be doing over the school year. So I don't have a, like, an ETA on when that will be completed, but as soon as we can get those rolled out, get them in hand, we'll, we'll be moving on. We also have the security camera system, an IP-based security system, Veracata, that is being, uh... That was, is partially already installed. The majority of the camera systems in the high school have been installed. I believe, I have listed there, I believe, 25 of 28, but I believe it's 33 of 36 is actual number. I got that transposed somewheres. We're waiting on a couple of back-ordered items. But right now, that is, that if that system's live for the high school, that's actually a little screenshot when nobody was in the building at all there, that we just, I just took and threw on there. And it gives us right now, gives us a 30-day retention right now of, where we can go back and view. It's motion-based, so it's only viewing if there's any kind of motion currently in here, it's only recording on motion. We have the rest of the, of the buildings also planned and scheduled for the wiring. So in the elementary school, we're having that at February break. It's scheduled to be wired, and then the middle school will be in spring break. So as soon as the wiring is, is done, we'll start the installation of the cameras, and we have those cameras on hand right now. We've got 12 going to the middle school and 12 going to the elementary school, covering more. Or with the exits and entrances, the exits compared to, you know, there's much more visibility we need in the high school compared to the other buildings there. As we move along with some of the projects that we're still, we are working with, working on, we've got, I'm gonna go a little technical here, C-Scale, a client connector. What this is, is a, is a, it's a, think of an app that's running on a PC or a Chromebook. And what it's doing is, it's, it's helping us filter and send traffic to a secure portal that goes back and forth to allow us, one, to provide the same kind of filtering we have here at the school if any of those devices are taken off camp, taken off campus. So, and allows us to track better what's happening on a specific device, if there is an issue or anything comes up with that device. So we're in the process of rolling that out right now with a couple of pilot groups. We want to make sure that it's rolled out properly, so that if there are issues where it interferes with any kind of instructional technologies, we can make sure we address that and not, you know, our goal is not to disrupt any, you know, instruction first. So we have that, that initiative's been underway, and we are moving forward with that. And I'm excited to see when that product is completely rolled out, along with our current C-Scale product, which currently fits well with our internet traffic filtering here at the, at the school. When they're combined together, it'll give us a really nice view of what's happening at the school and this overall better, safer environment for web traffic and such for the... Our next thing here is, we've got a cybersecurity assessment that we were in the process of doing. A little, little, I'll try to keep it at a high level. We're, we're, we'll be doing vulnerability scanning on the network, attempting to find devices and systems and software that may be out of date, still have exploits or vulnerabilities that could be exploited that we are looking to close off. There's a lot of devices on the net, on the network here, so right now, we're really trying to identify as many devices as possible to run those. to run those, um, those scans. Once the scanning is complete, we've been able to identify the vulnerabilities, we'll be providing a report on those vulnerabilities and a action plan to remediate those, those issues. You know, if they're, if they can be remediated, if they cannot, you know, some, some softwares and hardware are too aged to, that they might not have remediation available and we'll have to recommend an option to move away from that platform if that is the case. Part of our cybersecurity, uh, cybersecurity in general is we're also, um, going to be rolling out cybersecurity awareness training to, to staff, um, currently and, uh, we're making accessible in, uh, their, their professional or their, uh, portal. I guess you call it professional development, but maybe it's just, uh, employee training. I forget what the term is. I think it's a frontline and, um, it's, uh, what it is, is the, the cybersecurity training is you go through a series of modules that'll take you through different, uh, aspects such as phishing and, where you go through the modules and then at the end there will be some testing involved to ensure that the, the staff have actually retained the knowledge. If you fail the test at the end, you have to retake the, you have to retake the, module before you can take the test again. So it's a, you know, it's a, uh, it's a step to, to help, um, bring awareness to the, to the staff and, you know, everything from, um, you know, harmful links and phishing and other techniques that are out there, you know, the majority of, I could just go cite off a bunch of majority of, you know, stats of where you see, uh, you know, what are most vulnerable and it's, it's always the people in an organization that are most vulnerable. So we can help train them. And I, I know that we have, we're going to have a, I don't have the date here, but I know where we have a date in mind of when we'd like all that training to be, to be completed by. And, uh, I had a couple other notes, just a couple other, uh, areas to, you know, we have a roadmap of other projects that are either we want to, to take on or, you know, they're hoping to get to or they're currently in process. You know, there's, there's many aspects here that we, we have a network project we would like to undertake, to replace some of our older, older switching to the new Aruba hardware along with Aruba ClearPass and Aruba Central. They're all, uh, Aruba is an Hewlett-Packard, um, company. So if you might know the name HP a little bit better than Aruba. Um, one of the, uh, you know, the leaders of the industry. A lot of, when, a lot of these products that are listed there are under Aruba all have to do with how do we, um, bridge, how do we bring our whole network together in a way that we can track it, understand it and be confident that we have a, a, a good, safe, you know, efficient environment. These products together will allow us to get to that point. And then we're, we're looking at other initiatives such as, um, multi-factor authentication, you know, how do we improve our, our backups and disaster recovery right now along with process, uh, development? How are we? Certain, certain things happen in the industry, in, in IT throughout the year. Certain things happen with data processing, beginning of school year, account creations. How does data that needs to get transmitted and processed, you know, move between system to system? We're looking at all that to try to assist the best way we can. So that's my, you know, kind of initial thoughts, uh, being here for the, you know, helping assist Chatham in the past, uh, three or four months here. Looking forward to, you know, helping, uh, these processes and seeing where we can go.
Thank you.
Just one footnote to that, um, Brian mentioned the cybersecurity awareness training. That's actually now a requirement of our cybersecurity insurance and we're on a pretty tight deadline. Uh, the teachers will be, uh, next Monday, we'll be participating in that training and, and the rest of the employees shortly thereafter because we have to meet that deadline to re, um, re-up our, our insurance. So, uh, Mr. Chuddy's right on top of that. So that's one, one tight deadline we're going to have for that.
Is that, um, is that because we have a new policy carrier or because there was a new requirement from existing?
Yeah.
Were there other new requirements this year?
We've got, uh, multi-factor authentication, uh, implemented in various parts of the network, but not the entire network. So we're going to have to accelerate the deployment of that strategy.
So, um, I've got, I collected four questions. Brief answers are like one sentence is fine. I'm just curious, the access point and camera project. I'm putting them together because I think they both depend on wiring. Is that right? That's the constraint is wiring on both of those?
Yes.
Okay. But besides wiring, we have, we're not, all the materials are onsite?
So the, um, Fridakia product was purchased over the last couple of years through Save Schools money. I believe that's the grant funding and, um, we were unable to fully implement it because of COVID and work, work not being done. That high school project was wired, I believe, last summer. So we're just getting to that now. The second phase was just to add the elementary and middle school, which is a much smaller project. You heard about a dozen cameras in each building and the access points, uh, will require a new, new K-point.
And that's, that's district staff that's pulling the wiring?
No, that'll be a contractor.
Okay. And they, they've given a timeline or they're not, we're still?
I think we're in the process of gaining quotes.
I, I have it there. We're on the schedule for both for February and spring break. So we've got those and we've got the quotes. Great.
And then as you heard Brian mention, the acquisition of the hardware for the wireless system comes through E-rate, which is universal service money, uh, provided to us for refreshing, infrastructure approximately every five years. So that's how we updated the core and the switches when I first got here and now we're using that to update the wireless.
The Veracata storage, is that onsite or offsite?
It's, yeah.
It, it is, it is both. The cameras themselves have their own storage and then there is cloud-based storage and depending on price, you could increase the, on the, uh, the cloud-based storage if you wanted to.
So our recordings are being shipped off-site continuously? And the retention is mostly offsite, I'm imagining?
The retention, yeah, it has offsite retention. Yep.
Oh, it is.
Due with Fridakia is they, you, you purchase a SKU, which is a combination of the resolution of the camera and the amount of, uh, retention you want. And then it's, it's backed up, uh, in the cloud. What typically happens, no matter what system you have, is, um, anywhere from 15 to 30 days retention is generally, um, advisable. You don't always know if something that's happened within a building, a locker, you know, uh,
30 days sounds right to me.
Yeah. And so what, but I want to assure you that, um, we have, we have flexibility that once we know that a, that an event has occurred, that we can go and secure that footage, um, and, you know, and archive it indefinitely. And typically if it's related to a disciplinary case or a criminal case, a break-in or whatever, then, uh, that might be subject to discovery and the system is completely compliant, as you would know, with all the discovery rules.
Okay. So we, we used to have, um, was it IBOS, the internet filtering gateway? Is the Zscaler client connector, if that works, going to make that redundant?
I don't believe we have IBOS right now.
We don't? That's gone?
Yeah, we're using a combination of two things right now. We have GoGuardian filtering and Zscaler filtering.
Okay. So are they, I'm just, I'm just thinking about the overall experience of using these devices. They are sometimes very slow. Usually they're great. So I'm just curious, you know, as we start stacking these solutions on top of each other, if anything can be eliminated, um,
I'm going back to perhaps something that Giles had said in one of his updates and I believe that you were correct. I believe the plan was that there was redundancy between the IBOS and the Zscaler. Once the Zscaler was fully implemented, that redundancy would, that would be eliminated, um, and, and there would be a, a cost, you know, justification to do that.
Okay. I would just like to note too, that GoGuardian filtering is strictly for Chromebooks while Zscaler encompasses all Windows devices and Apple devices that connect as well.
Okay. And the, and presumably personal phones as well?
If they are on the network here, then they would be covered underneath that if they are not on the network.
So currently, if you remember when we had the cybersecurity issues.
We had to really close the curtains there.
We shut down the guest network.
Yeah.
And, um, although, although that was a necessity, we hope that once we fully implement the new Aruba solution, that we'll be able to create a secure, uh, guest network again so that, um, visitors, parents, guests, um, can then have some limited access to the internet while on site.
So that, that's the current plan and we're just not sure when. A lot of it's going to depend on the, the timeline, right? Which seems like it's going to be by the end of the school year is when the equipment's going to be in place and then sometime after that.
With E-rate funding, we had to apply and, and, and receive the funding. I think that's already, already taken place and the orders are in with the vendor at this point. So now, yeah, so now, now it could be a supply chain challenge, but, um, we're hopeful that, that during the rest of this particular school year, 21, 22, by the beginning of the next, we should be in much better shape. And I, I would venture to guess that once we have, um, a much better density, newer technology and properly installed access points, you're going to see a kind of a, a better user experience.
My last question, and this might be a year too early to figure this out. I'm curious about the financial impact of that estimate we're thinking about for the fleet lifetime of five years on these, on these machines. We've increased the utility. They've gone out to primary ed. Wear and tear on mobile devices is rough. I'm curious, like, what do we expect our average fleet, like that, clearly we want to eliminate anything that's too old, but what do we think the average lifetime is going to end up being?
I don't, I don't have an answer for that right this second. There's two things to think about. One on the Chromebooks is when a Chromebook is, is issued or when it's, when it's produced, there's only a certain amount of time that Google will provide updates to that Chromebook before that Chromebook will no longer receive security updates. So there's a timeline there, which is around five years for the most part for the, for that. So that's the thing about that. Uh, that's one of the big things, uh, of why we're kind of looking at a five-year. It could be, could change, could change to four years or six years. That's more of a, uh, as part of the process here right now is understanding that. It's, it's how, how do we, uh, how do we assess that and come up with what is, makes the most sense?
We, um, I guess, I guess when, you know, we were able to cover some of these materials out of, were we able to couple, like, we increased our laptop buys the last couple of years, right?
Yeah, I think Mike has built in the, uh,
Yeah, the Chromebooks and Giles, we, we set up a plan to refresh so many, you know, each year. So we put a quite a big number on the hardware to be able to do that. So that piece should be taken care of. We built that in the budget, I think, three, three years ago.
And that's like, every year that's like X percentage?
Yep, that's what he was, that was the, the plan was.
So on, but it's on a five-year schedule or?
I think it was five years.
Okay.
That you'd have a whole new, you know, every year you buy so many and that's how he was doing that. So he said that was manageable and, and, you know, the money that I put in, that was, that was working out. Cause the first year we bought them, I think it was before, it was before sales here, we made one major purchase, you know?
I guess I'm, the thing I'm curious about is if our, uh, primary ed students are taking more or less care of these devices than our secondary ed students and I, because that's the new use, right?
Yeah.
I can't speak to it by level. I, I will say that we've experienced a higher than, than typical, um, with COVID and, and these units going back and forth on a fairly regular basis, a higher incident of damage. So we, we are trying to evaluate, get a handle on, on how to, um, take into account that as a, as another dimension or data point that we may have not, been a bit underestimated based on previous experience.
Okay. But no screaming alarm bells at the moment?
No.
That's it for me. Anyone else on tech? Okay.
Thank you, Brian. I appreciate you coming out tonight.
All right. Uh, and I think we're on F, right? Report from, uh, the student representative, Mia Port.
So actually speaking to the technology part, I just had a question. This is kind of like a really small minor thing. Put the student government page on the website. That's from last year. Who would I see or contact to change that?
If you just call our office, I'll put you in touch with Adam Charbonneau, our communication specialist, and I know he'd be really happy to work with you and get that to be current information. So,
Okay.
Uh, can we reach out to Mia?
All right, thank you. Um, so first on the agenda, the musical is in full swing. I already mentioned that, but it's Little Women, so we're all really excited. I think that's going to be really cool. Um, as we're speaking, the boys are playing against Hudson in the basketball game, so that's really exciting. And our girls had a big victory over them last night. So getting into something more serious, um, so Mr. Thorson, he went into, uh, senior government classes and had an open discussion with them about lockdowns. I really feel that this is a great step, um, towards the right direction and more discussions that need to be had. Sorry. Um, I think these are very, although they're really hard things to talk about, I think they're very positive that they're happening in our student body. Um, school safety should still be a priority, um, regardless of the times that we're in. I think, you know, we could provide the student body with videos, or even just, you know, talking with them, no matter how young or like old they are. I know that there's certain ways to deliver information based on your age and your maturity. I think that's extremely important, important, but I, along with others, truly believe that more needs to be said and done in regards to school, school safety. It was, it's really quite concerning to be frank. Um, and I'm willing, the student government is willing to work with, um, administration and the school board and trying to figure out things that we can do to, um, address these concerns. Does anyone have any questions or comments?
I just, I just want to thank you for bringing, uh, bringing that to our attention. I think last month or before was the impetus for, you know, Mr. Thorson to, to begin the process and, uh, for us to look back and see some of the other programs that we had put in place prior to COVID. We brought in guest speakers, talked about different pro, safety programs and stuff like that. And I think COVID came and we kind of took a little bit of a backseat, so I could appreciate you, um, expressing the students' concern over, over that. And that's kind of, reignited our efforts to make sure that we're not, uh, neglecting that as a priority as well.
Yeah, yeah, it's very important. Thank you. Anything else? Any other questions related to anything?
Yeah, when, when's the musical?
I'm, I'm not entirely sure.
Muriel's got it.
There we go. I'll see you there. Yeah.
Also have the, um, Pops concert. Just a little bit to the 19th, just to see if we could get past a little bit of the spike in COVID and, and have that as, um, as expected. So more to come on that. That would be the, you know, it'd be the day after the next board meeting, so.
Okay. Thank you, Mia. Gee, we're up to you. Dr. D'Angelo, superintendent report.
Okay, I have a few things to update you on and then we're going to invite, uh, Ashley up to give you a update on the Senior Capstone program. I hope everyone enjoyed the, uh, winter recess. It was a nice, um, breather from, uh, emerging that's been going on, but certainly we've come back and there's still a lot of the challenges related to, to the pandemic in front of us. Um, as Matt mentioned, uh, today we, we handed out, um, 442 COVID antigen test kits. Uh, these were the test kits, um, that were provided to us by the governor. Uh, if you've been following the news, um, over the break, she ordered enough test kits for all the students, uh, in the state. Unfortunately, they were ordered and delivered, um, to regional education centers late last week into the weekend and distributed, uh, to us on Monday. The initial intention was to
weekend and distributed to us on Monday. The initial intention was to potentially have students have parents administer the test to students prior to their return. So they, there could be an indication of both, given to both symptomatic and asymptomatic students to be able to knock down the potential for students coming back to school who are who were affected. We, as I also mentioned, those parents who were not able to come by tonight, we're accumulating those requests in the school offices. And over the next couple of days, at their convenience, can stop by and pick those up. Our suggestion in the pamphlet that we gave out with the test kits, and I don't know if I mentioned that there's two test kits in each box, and there's one box per student, we're suggesting that, and again, this is a voluntary program, and parents can use the tests at their discretion and their preference. But we did suggest that they perhaps might want to run a test this week to see if there's any of their students are positive and then save one for potentially when a student becomes symptomatic or has come in close contact with a positive case. But again, parents can can use their discretion as to how they would like to use the use the test kits. Some information to update that's specific to Columbia County. There is, once again, as COVID has presented in the past, different counties have adopted different protocols. As was mentioned earlier, the CDC comes out with recommendations, and then it's really incumbent upon the states to decide whether they're going to accept the recommendations or not. In particular, the one that was mentioned earlier, in terms of shortening the quarantine period to five days, the only recommendation that's been adopted by the New York State Department of Health at this point is the one that reduces the quarantine for essential workers. Teachers and healthcare workers are considered essential, and that went into effect. So and and there's some, there's caveats regarding that. The individual needs to be vaccinated, needs to be fever free for 72 hours, and needs to not be exhibiting any symptoms. And if that's the case, then currently, they can return within five days as long as they're either double masked or using a K95 mask. As late as last night, the CDC is deciding whether they might add another caveat, which is that upon return to the workplace, that they would also be tested on day five. But that does not exist as we speak. The other couple items to note, which vary by county and can be a source of some frustration between parents and administrators, superintendents in the area, is that currently, the governor had also mentioned the use of these kits for programs like test to stay and shortened quarantine periods. But right now, in our county, and I know it's under review and under consideration, there is no test to stay program, nor is there any test out of quarantine option. We do meet, as you know, every Wednesday. And I know that that's going to be a very lively conversation this week, mainly because counties like Green County, Schenectady, Albany, Saratoga have implemented variations of both test to stay and return from quarantine earlier than 10 days. So more to come on that. But I felt, I can't report on something that's not the current status in our, in our county. That's, we feel fortunate that we were able to reopen. Currently, we're holding steady with staffing. If you follow what the governor's desire is that we stay, make sure that students stay in person, there are still some challenges around that that generally relate to staffing. Districts typically are shutting down for reasons in terms of not having enough drivers or not having enough instructional and support staff within their buildings. It's not as common due to quarantine. So we remain hopeful. We had a good week this week. We have had a number of positive cases among staff and students. But we've also had a number of substitutes that have shown that have that have presented themselves, and we are faring pretty well. As you look regionally, however, you'll see that there's quite a bit of a spike in the number of cases in many of the school districts. There's an article in the Times Union this evening giving some metrics on that. That's, that's my report for my portion. And now I'd like to invite Ashley. Ashley's got the special distinction of being our teacher leader for the senior team. And I'm going to turn it over to her for this exciting update.
Hi, everybody. Thanks for having me. This is your program. First shout out to my team, Megan Johnson, Eager, Sam Fisher, Rodney Sticoles, Emma Pearson, and all the other senior team. And special shout out to Jen Correia, who had her schedule switched because.
I don't know. You project plenty good unless you're online.
Is that better?
Yeah.
Did Jen hear her shout out if she's online? So we need daily as a team. It's really important. One of the big changes that we did this year was move it into it being the senior program into English 12 classes. But I don't want to undercut the the importance of the team. It's a program. It's not a class. And so it's been really important to have our team together. We do a lot of grading together. We do a lot of dual grading, a lot of conversation, and obviously, a lot of problem solving, particularly in these last two years. It's been really important to have a team to be able to problem solve together. I also wanted to thank the board for everybody's support last year in particular. It was definitely challenging, and it required a lot of problem solving. And the team is is really appreciative of your support. We deeply believe in the program and having the board support really meant a lot to us last year. So just a brief overview of the program. There's three components. The first one is the CV binder, which is your resume, letter of intent, recommendations, things like that. One of the things that we did differently this year was try to make that more of a tracked system. It was pretty heavily focused on college. And a lot of the feedback that we were getting was not every student is going to college. And so we really tried to break it up for students who were looking at a university or college track, students who were looking at a military track, and students who were looking at a trade track or a workforce track. So most of the components are the same, but there's a little bit of a difference depending on what the student thinks they might be going to in the future. The senior capstone presentation is obviously the big thing. And I'll get a little bit more into that later. And then in June, we have expo and awards night. That's our celebration. That's where we invite community, faculty, staff, families to come in and celebrate. To be honest, the team hasn't even really talked about that this year. We're kind of waiting to see what happens. But that usually happens in June. So the biggest change to the program this year is that we moved it into an ELA class. We moved it into the English 12 class and made it part of that class. So all of the requirements used to be standalone, and now they are completed by English 12 students for grades in that class. There are a lot of different reasons for this. One of them was the scheduling for English electives in the spring. What was happening for students was particularly our VOTEC students who only spend four periods here at Chatham High School with us, they were being kind of shut out of certain English electives. There are a lot of English electives that have been offered. And because of scheduling, they didn't really have the opportunity to choose which one they really wanted to do. So this kind of solves that. The second half of the English curriculum in the spring is like a sampling of each of the electives. So it allows students to have a little bit of each, which we think is a really good thing. We also, one of the things we wanted to do was give students clearer directions, more scaffolding, more skills and time for the program. So it's built into a class where it used to be standalone. One of the biggest things that we saw was some difficulty accomplishing this on their own and not really getting the skills that we wanted. And so putting it into a class and having that direction instruction has been really helpful. We've gotten good feedback for the most part as far as moving it into the English class. Ms. Conley gave me a couple. She's been survey, surveying the students, a little bit of their feedback. They like it. They have more time and more help. They're given a lot of information and understanding about the project now. It helps relieve a lot of stress, gets help that they need. It's great. So I think that has been really good for students. And I think particularly coming off of last year, it would have been incredibly difficult, a really heavy lift for the seniors to do this for a variety of reasons. And so I think it's really valuable. I think we're seeing more student buy in. The work that we're getting from the students has really improved. The timeliness of turning that in has really improved. So as far as what do students experience in their English class, in the first quarter, it's all CV binder. So it's going through all of the requirements for the CV binder and turning those in that kind of made up their first quarter grade. The second quarter is dedicated to the capstone presentation preparation. So their initial proposal, expanded outline, and a rehearsal. And then their final exam is the presentation, which will take place on February 7. Couple things that we've encountered that we didn't necessarily account for would be students that are not taking English 12. The biggest percentage of that would be AP students. And so we are working with the AP teacher. We're trying to work with AP students. I think we have some ideas. We're working with guidance and administration about how we can improve that in the future. But I think it's something that we really need to look at as far as how do we work with our AP students that don't, to get them a short end of this gig as it comes to this program, and still allow them to challenge themselves in the AP class. They don't know that we got that balance perfectly. But we're hearing a good amount of that. So we're, we're really trying on that. And then we have some students that don't take English at all. That's why we take our VOTEC. They take it through New Visions. They are fully remote this year, or they do their college program, and they don't come to these classes. So we're also working with guidance and administration on that. I think that's a little bit of a whole mess that we're fixing. Some ways that we have, like, again, some of these things that we didn't necessarily think about in spring or even at that point. On action. We're working with guidance and administration.
I, I just have two.
Hold on one more. Do we have yet another spare microphone or? It went to sleep again.
Actually, I have three then, because Jen didn't hear the shout out. So.
Oh, Jen didn't hear my shout?
Yeah, so let's all shout out to Jen Diorio online.
Ms. Diorio, our spreadsheet consultant. We appreciate you.
There we go. Approximately how many students would be would be in that AP category?
I believe there's total in AP, I think, nine. And then there's three that are at VOTEC or New Visions. There's two fully remote seniors, and there's one senior that is doing the college.
I just wanted some context on that. Thank you. And then the only last thing was, I just wanted to thank the senior team. I remember meeting with them a couple of times last spring when we were, when we were all concerned over how last year was going to turn out. And you guys all really stepped up and got very creative. And I think this is, although there might be some unintended consequences that you're addressing, I just want to thank you. I think the program has turned out tremendously well this year.
I got two questions. One, is the Capstone project entirely contained within grade 12?
Yes. Yep. So ideally, and something that we've been working on with the team and the rest of the faculty, is looking at the skills and conversations about those being included in all grades. I think one of the things that we noticed a couple of years ago, absent of COVID, was students were like, surprise, these are the skills. And when it was really should have been kind of a scaffolding and building all the way up. So the program is entirely for 12th graders, but the skill acquisition, we kind of refer to it as like a K12 final exam. And so the acquisition of skills is all the way through, but the actual display of them is only 12th grade.
So and aside from the the AP students, which is work in progress, there's no longer an independent graduation requirement. It's just linked to the grading for ELA 12. Anyone else have questions? It, if, that's a really big change, what you're talking about. So I can't wait to see how this works out.
Yeah, I think, sorry, Mira, go ahead. Thank you. I think we're excited to see how it's going to turn out. One of the biggest changes is it's a much shortened program. Usually, the presentations are in April. And so we have kind of condensed it. A lot of the feedback that we were getting entire year was you gave us too much time. And so it was kind of hanging out there. And there was a lot of procrastination, you know, we, we, we built the time that we have. And so I know a lot of students are probably feeling a little bit of a crunch because they have, they have a month or so. But I think this timeline is is much better. Because, one, you get it early, and two, it's not, it's not just. So I think there's a lot of.
Yeah, I can speak on it since I'm like going through the process. Like, my friends and I and other people, we really like the fact that it's an English class, and it's very, very helpful to have Ms. Eager there. And like, Ms. Conley and our advisors are like right there for us. So I think it's a really good job this year. Yeah.
Nerves are running so high last year. I'm sure that there's a lot more relaxation also in the kids' kids' minds this year now they have all this help from the beginning of the year. So thank you again.
You're welcome. I think just to speak to that, I think that you're right in the sense that there's a lot of support, a lot more support than we've ever had. I think we are dealing with with levels of anxiety. And I think one of the things about not being in school for full time or being fully remote was getting up and speaking. I try to remind classes that that happens all the time. My heart was racing a little bit more when I was sitting there. So I think there are what I'd like to call some some normal levels of anxiety. And then I think some, some things that we're dealing with because of what happened in the last year and a half. But again, I think having the support of the English class, it would have been a really, really heavy lift for the students.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. We've been looking forward to that one for a few months.
Awesome, please. And anytime. I mean, we're happy to come. I told the team they didn't have to all join us. And I think there's a couple online. Rodney's here. But if at any time you want us back, and you'll be getting invites to the, to the presentations. So hopefully you can join us. And it is Monday, February 7. Yep. So pray for sunny weather.
Okay. So we're going to move on to H. This is no surprise to anyone here, but R46, be it resolved at the Board of Education, accept the resignation of Craig Simmons, effective December 31, 2021. Can I have a motion? Questions or comments? All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, and this one's going to be a short discussion. We do have some options on a plan to replace Craig. Of course, there's an election coming up, but we can't leave the the seat empty for that long. So Dr. D'Angelo, do you want to just talk about we did last time?
And we can go from there? Quick overview. So what's a little bit different this time is that Craig's resignation ends up being in the same year for which his board seat is up for reelection. So the the options really speak to the timeframe from now to June 30. So really, the two, the two options boil down to this. Probably the least popular one is that the board could technically have a special election, could ask for candidates to go through the typical process of getting petitions and and hold a, an election. It is done, but it's done very infrequently because of many factors, including cost that's involved in having an election. The probably the more popular route is that the board could publicly announce that there is a vacancy, and they're seeking letters of interest from the community members. There are very small numbers of. There are very small numbers of criteria in terms of what it is to be a board, a board member. You would publicize that. We would bring attention to that through social media and through press releases. And then the board would put a process in place by which they would evaluate those who are interested. Typically, depending on the number of people who are interested, you may hold some interviews. And then the board can select and appoint a temporary board member who would be appointed from that very next meeting to the end of June.
Okay. And there's, there's a mandatory timeline for some of that, right?
Roughly about 90 days.
Okay. Starting from a few days ago.
Yeah. So you know, you could, you could also argue that, and I know some districts who've pushed that a little bit. When you think of, you know, 90 days being the end of March, you go through the process and you bring someone aboard in early April. Conceivably, they would be, they would serve for probably 60 to 90 days. But the rules do ask that you.
And when's our petition deadline for the election season?
So typically the election, which is like March or May 17.
Yeah. So the irony here is someone would have to, they accept an appointment. It's right around the same time that someone, maybe the same person, maybe a different person needs to start their election cycle as well.
And I didn't check to see this election cycle because remember.
Yeah. How many seats is it?
Because you reduced the number of board seats. And I do apologize. I'll send it to you in the Friday report. There's a couple of people up, but I don't believe they're all three-year terms to get us on a cycle. There's three. Okay. So the. Okay. So there's three seats up for reelection and I believe, don't hold me to this until I confirm it, that two are going to be three-year terms and one is going to be a two-year term. And that will put us on a cycle that gets everybody back on track through the reduction.
Okay.
And just the way that works is that the three seats, the two top vote getters would get the three-year terms and the third vote getter would get the shorter term.
So I, I'm not sure that we're at a, do we need to do any kind of resolution today to enact a process?
No, I, I could share with you in the Friday report, the previous, I think I may have already, a few weeks ago, dusted this off, but I could share with you the typical press release that we've used in the past. I could suggest a, a couple timelines. I would imagine you'd want to at least have it out there for two or three weeks. I think I could put together a couple of different scenarios that fit within the requirement and get those to you on Friday.
Okay. Uh, I don't have an appetite for that. I don't know anyone that does, but does anyone?
Yeah. Like I said, that's very uncommon. I have seen it done, but.
But you're right. That's an option. So I'm not seeing anyone raise their hand. So. I, yeah. So let's. Do you board members feel good with, Sal's going to put the verbiage together. We'll put the, we'll put the release out in, it goes into one newspaper and we'll put it out on, on Chatham channels too?
Yeah. I think we could get it out to the Chatham Press, to the Register Star, to, to, you know, Facebook, to our website.
Yep. And we'll do that. And then I remember interviewing for my appointment, which was a few years ago. I think that that was a great process. So we'll do a brief interview cycle and then hopefully we'll find some interested parties and, and of course, we've also got the election coming up. So not time to think about that yet, but soon. Okay. Any, any questions about that process? I think Chris is the only one here that maybe hasn't seen that yet. Destiny, you've seen that, right? Yeah. And Chris isn't here today. So. All right.
Chris may have been one of the.
He was appointed, but he didn't see it from the other side.
Oh, gotcha. Right. He was appointed through that process though, I think. Right?
Yeah. He was the last, the last one appointed. Okay. So we'll move on to R47. Be it resolved that the Board of Education approve a $3,000 stipend for the Superintendent's Administrative Assistant for additional COVID responsibilities in the 2021, 2022 school year. Can I have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
Any questions or comments on this one? Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. And we are into consensus agenda, I through K. R48, be it resolved that the Board of Education accept consensus agenda, I through K as written. Can I have a motion?
Second.
Questions or comments on this? I, I have one comment, which is I'd like to thank the Holtzman Family Foundation for their library grant. Does anyone else have questions? It's a short list today. Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
All right. We are into items for future agenda. Clearly we have an appointment coming up in the next couple of months here. Maybe faster. Does anyone else have new agenda that they'd like to table? Okay. We're back into second public comment. So second public comment is intended to give stakeholder, industry stakeholders an opportunity to comment on today's topics from today's agenda. If, if we missed any hands earlier, now's a chance online to hit the digital hand button. Or does anyone in the room want to, we got at least one. Okay. And we don't have digital hands at the moment, right?
No, Jen Diorio was saying she did not hear the.
That's, that's why I'm back. No, it's not. I thought I'd take off my senior team hat, put on my union hat. I, to be perfectly honest, was online last year, or last year, last meeting when Craig was here and I was not camera ready. But I just wanted to offer my thanks to him on behalf of teachers' union. You know, we bargained a couple of contracts with him at the table and it was, it was great to work with him. And I would just be remiss if I didn't also say that. So I'm not, Craig, I'm not sure if you're online, but if you are, you'll be missed and, and put on my teacher cap. It was great to work with him as a parent. So I just wanted to say that as well.
Great. Thank you. Is that, is that it for the? Okay. We've got one more. Great.
Hi guys. Happy New Year. Unfortunately, not new us. We're still here. So I just wanted to say a few things. It continues to be disappointing at best that there is a lack of accountability between the district administration and the Department of Health. Nobody seems to want to take ownership of the directives or policies. And I know it's an ever-changing environment, but again, I think that as parents and stakeholders, we deserve to have answers and some sort of communication. We've been told on countless times that there's going to be open discussions or at least follow-up on discussions, and I don't feel like that happens. I also think that it's important that the board recognizes and is aware that the way that staff and teachers speak with students on current events is important. There was an incident today where unfortunately my daughter was made to feel as though anybody who is not overly excited about the COVID testing or vaccines, that they were stupid. So that was a conversation that we had to have with the principal of the school and it was handled. And I do know that everybody tries to do their best and have good conversations and open pathways for students to speak. I do just think that it's important that everybody is conscious of how they speak and how they say things because it's not fair for any of these kids to be upset and come home sad. Matt, I have a follow-up for you. I sent a lengthy email on November 17 with some outstanding items that you were going to follow up with me on. I would just like to see if you would be able to provide some updates to those. I know you were going to ask administration to look into them and give us some additional feedback. So that is still on my agenda.
Megan, since the public doesn't have access to that, I'm not going to respond now. But if you could just respond back to that email again?
Absolutely.
Thank you.
Let's see. I also wanted to know, I did read the article in the paper. I believe Dr. Root, that was you, that posted the American Rescue Plan funding that was in the newspaper. I just had some questions regarding the stakeholder feedback that was received. I would like to know, or if perhaps there could be a little more transparency surrounding that, how much participation was actually received for that feedback that you guys are applying the information and the changes on? I know that we've added an extra school psychologist to the buildings, but I'm not really seeing how their presence is impacting the overall population's mental health. What specific interventions are they doing for the student body as a whole? So I know that Mia has said, you know, that safety is a topic and that everybody wants to be included and have those really holistic conversations. So with mental health, the, mental health issues being on the rise, I think that that would be a good piece for the school psychologist that was just hired to be a part of. My other concern over the last few months and still today is that we hear a lot about high achievers and those that require extra support, AIS support, special education, extracurriculars, clubs. These are amazing achievements and Chatham has great extracurricular activities for everybody. But my concern is what about those children and staffers that fall in the middle? What about those that aren't involved in theater and STEM? And those that can't participate in sports because they've been excluded because of district guidelines and mandates? Those students that get through their day-to-day, they don't cause any ripples to the pool and they just go about their day. So how are those students being supported and represented by the changes in resources that you guys are approving and implementing? Every student, every day is the motto that we keep hearing, but I don't know how we're actively attempting to engage these students. And honestly, how are you actively attempting to engage the community to see what we feel is important? The group of us here today are here every two weeks and we can voice and speak until we're blue in the face. But without having that feedback or that transparency, I don't know what it does for us. We're recorded and whoever's online can see us, but the general population and the people that can't be here aren't heard. I know Beth, you had mentioned some surveys or some other avenues to receive communications, but I don't see any of that followed up on either. So I think by not having that transparency and by only focusing on gifted or extracurricular or folks that need extra help, that we're missing a majority of the population and it's unjust. Thank you.
Thank you, Megan. And I'll, I'll look out for that.
Hi, Mary Ann Piro. I wasn't going to speak, but I just wanted to take a rip off of what Megan was saying. And a common theme that happens with me is the culture here in Chatham. I mean, every single time we go near the culture, I really, that, that's my belly. That's really what gets me concerned. This is the first time that my kids were not excited about getting back to school. And they're both naturally happy, bubbly kids. So we really, we are in unprecedented times. Okay? I know you guys see things one way. We see things completely different way. But we are all in this same pot together. We have to figure this out. I think a couple of things we can do is maybe during some of these Board of Education meetings, set aside a little bit of time for question and answer, as long as it's civil. And, and you know, nobody's carrying on and getting upset. I think we really could use, just like give a 10-minute slot to, let's ask a question. And then you guys, you know, okay, if you don't have the answers, come back to us. But engagement, I think engagement is critical right now because we are, the whole country is completely divided and we have to fix this. Chatham is a wonderful town. This is a wonderful school. Our kids are great. We have to, like, like Megan said, we have to support the ones in the middle that are getting caught in this washing machine of ideas and mandates. And, and everything changes every single day. So we can't just be stuck in one, this is the way we've always done it. So this is what we're going to do. We need to maybe change things up, like adding the capstone project to the ELA. That obviously is a very workable solution. But community engagement has to be brought into the fore because it's here. I mean, COVID brought a lot of people to understanding what's being taught in schools, what, what's happening with the school. Parents are upset. And we're supposed to be working together. So let's just think about this. Like, let's just talk about having more of an open dialogue, probably in these sessions because it's already set up for this. So if you could just figure that out, we don't, we'll be civil. But it has to happen because we can't just have this wall of, here's what we're going to do and you guys have to deal with it. And, and that's just not working anymore. We have to save our community. The student population is dropping. We are having an influx of people moving in here from New York City who do not have children and aren't planning on having children. So we're at what, 898 students now? It is going to drop and it's going to drop dramatically. And then you throw in parents that are disenfranchised because the school district is not working with them. You're going to lose more of them. Los Angeles County just dropped their vaccine mandate because they had 30,000 students that had planned on leaving. And Los Angeles County is the second largest school district in the country. And they, you know, we're all facing the vaccine mandates. I mean, I know she's hovering that. Her little pen is waiting to sign it if she can. If we go down that road, you are going to lose more students. And we really don't want our community routed like that. We have a lot of traditions here. Let's try and save them. But we have to come up with new solutions. This isn't working. This isn't working. So let's just try and do that. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you, Mary Ann. That was going, do we have anyone else? Hands or anyone else on that list? That was going to be the end of the meeting. However, I do want to take us into executive session to speak about a topic of public safety. So I'd like to appoint Salvador D'Angelo, District Clerk pro temp for that session. It's not on the agenda, so I don't have the normal order here. But I just call for a motion? Can I? Questions? All in favor?
Aye.
This one will be quick, guys. And that's, that's the end of the public meeting. We're, we're not going to come back into a public session.